So, last call for anyone who wants to sign up to speak at any of the public hearings. After we begin the meeting, you will no longer be allowed to sign up or speak. Going once, going twice. Well, thank you, everyone. Would you please join me in stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for the invocation, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Estes?
May we bow our heads in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask for you to please give us your graces. Help us to, as a council, to think with clarity and have an open ear for all of our constituents. We give you so much praise for everything that you provide and pray to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm about to call our August 4th work session to order. It's great to see so many citizens here. At this point, I will entertain a motion, consideration to approve the agenda. I believe we do need to add an executive session for real estate. Any other additions or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda with executive session for real estate.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. So, before we begin our regular work session tonight, we have four public hearings. So, again, I'm gonna have our city manager just review the protocol for public hearings, just so everyone is on the same page as far as how we conduct our public hearings. And maybe some of you who may be here for the first time, or may be here, haven't been here in a while, since the last year and a half has been a little wonky. But, Mr. Peppers, would you just review the procedures with us, please?
Sure, and I'll address the audience, since y'all are here for these. We appreciate you attending tonight's meeting. We have public hearings tonight. The hearings are recorded verbatim and become part of a legal record of the cases being discussed. As such, you're required to sign up and fill out an affidavit, which you've done already, to speak during the public hearing process. Public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, noticed in neighboring property owners under the Development Code via mail, and noticed to the public at large via those large yellow public notice signs. The hearing will begin with the declaration of the mayor to open the public hearing, including the case number, description of the case, and a summary by staff of any preceding hearings or actions on that case. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant, will be given the first opportunity to speak, and they will have ten minutes in total to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of ten minutes to speak on their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment on any of the opposition statements. Once all parties have spoken, or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will call close the public hearing, and at that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties, and to give fairness to both sides, a timekeeper, that'll be me, will be assigned to track the ten minutes for each side. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of other speakers. Please give your name and address for the record before you start your comments. Address your comments to the council. The audience is asked to maintain decorum. The hearing is a monologue. You will not be discussing the case with council. You'll be providing your comments, and they will discuss the case once the public hearing has closed. We will be wiping down after each speaker. It's not because we think you're dirty people, it was just trying to keep things clean up here, so don't take offense to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So, we'll begin with our first public hearing. It's public hearing and discussion for case CUP 1910-001 for Great Sky, Pod 16. Mr. Pat-- Mr. Dyer?
I'm gonna handle Mr. Patton's role tonight for this public hearing. You recall that this is a matter that came before the city council beginning in 2019, seeking a master plan amendment and a conditional use permit for multifamily in Pod 16. The master plan amendment was approved, conditional use permit was denied, a lawsuit was filed appealing that decision or challenging our decision to deny this conditional use permit. We have not been able to have a hearing in that yet, and in the meantime, after some discussion between Mr. Peppers and myself with the applicant, they have come back with some changes to what they had proposed. So, we're in a sort of a funny position. It's not a normal public hearing. We've already had that. We were having a public hearing, just in the possibility that a compromise could be reached and the lawsuit settled. Nobody's made any commitments. We haven't, they haven't. It's just seeing if there's something that you might approve, that they can accept, in attempts to resolve the lawsuit. I think nobody expects that you will decide anything tonight, so don't feel pressured to do that. They just would like a little feedback in public, and so that you can get feedback from the public, so.
Just for clarity, I know this is not our standard public hearing, but should we stick-- I mean, I intend to stick to the format of the public hearing process, just so that's familiar with everyone, and familiar to council, and gives us the format to operate on tonight.
Yes, this part of it will proceed normally. It's just the context of it is not normal.
Correct, okay, thank you. So, at this point, we will open the public hearing for this case and ask the applicant and those in favor to speak in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Carl Westmore, and my address is 3343 Peachtree Road, Atlanta. As Mr. Dyer said, we have had discussions with him, Mr. Peppers, over the past several months. This is in court, as you know. We had a court date. We postponed that because we felt like it was in our interest and the city's interest if we could come up with some solution. Also, as he said, we don't expect a vote tonight. In fact, representatives of the owner are not here tonight, so to the extent that we needed to make some commitment, we'd be unable to do so, and think it's more fair if you would put this off and consider it perhaps at your next meeting. But, we do, to the extent that we can get some direction from you as to what would be an acceptable plan, so that we can respond to that, I think that would be very helpful. As you may recall, this property was originally zoned in by the city in 1999. The applicant bought the property in 2017. There were two applications in front of you, as Mr. Dyer said, in February of 2020, I believe. One was a master plan amendment. There were over 2,000 apartments that were originally approved as part of the overall development in several pods. That application removed all apartments from Pods 14, 15, 17, and 18, put all of them in Pod 16, and reduced the overall number from 2,050 to 798. Along with the master plan, a conditional use permit application was filed. That was denied by the council. There's-- we obviously, I'm not gonna argue with it tonight, but there's obviously a disagreement as to whether that was necessary. But, again, we're here to present a plan that we have prepared to be a-- we've taken some direction, obviously, from conversations with the city. We reviewed your tenants and the housing development roadmap. We've also worked with your consultant, who is providing the plan for the reservoir. So, what you'll see in the plan is a further reduction of the number of units, a provision of the types of housing that were called for in your studies, trails, and public access to the reservoir. And with that, let me let Bennett Sands with Wood Partners describe the plan. I think it's been sent to you, as well as some other images, and then we'll reserve any of the time we have. Thank you.
Good evening, Bennett Sands with Wood Partners. So, I'm gonna pick up where, I guess where we last left off, which was the denial of the Cup application. Since then, we've made, I would say, great strides in trying to come up with a plan that we think would be better received by the community and council, and I'd like to present that plan and just get some additional feedback from you. The first comment that we received, first, second, and third comment we received was that the city was tired of just the same old garden apartments. And, you know, one of the kind of key points, one of the key developments since then was, it sounds like there's been great progress made in the reservoir becoming more of an amenity to the community. And so, one of the first comments we got was, how are you going to address the reservoir and really open that up to the community? And can somebody pull up the site plan? So, this is the site plan that we've come up with, that hopefully addresses some of your concerns, and I'll start with the reservoir itself in the top left-hand corner. What we've done is really built the community around, you know, focusing on getting access to the lake for the community. And so, what we envision on the top-left corner here is more of a restaurant brewery type of location that really mimics what you see in a couple of locations on the Chattahoochee. If you've been to Rays on the River or Canoe, you know, the goal here would be to create a destination restaurant, public space that can take advantage of the reservoir views. We see this as an opportunity for graduation parties, weddings, receptions, whatever it may be, but, you know, for the first time, really giving, you know, good access over the reservoir where you can have a glass of wine, potentially sit on a dock and enjoy the view. The other comment we got was just too much traditional garden apartment and not enough diversity of housing. And so, what we've done here, if you look in the middle of the plan, is introduced the townhomes and duplex units into the community. So, we do have, you know, several buildings of conventional apartments, but what we've tried to do is incorporate other housing types, so we can address a need for folks who need more than just a studio or one-bedroom or typical two-bedroom unit. And so, with that, we've got, just on the reservoir side, we've got close to 80 units that are dedicated to, you know, non-traditional residential living. In addition, we've got 150 senior units, so really two communities on the reservoir side of the road here, one senior, one open to, you know, all ages, but a variety of housing types. The other thing we've done is really tried to push the density to Reservoir Drive. That accomplishes two things. It creates a sense of place as you approach the reservoir, but it also frees up the balance of the site to lower densities. So, on both sides of Reservoir Drive, you can see that we've got-- I'm sorry, can you go to the next slide? Yeah, this is probably a better view. You can now see we've got buildings up on the street. On both sides of Reservoir Drive, we've got townhomes on the west side, as well as duplexes. So, blending housing types across, you know, really all three phases of the development. I'll stop talking at this point and open it up to questions or comments.
No questions or comments at this point of the hearing, so? Have a time check, Mr. Peppers.
They have 3:20.
We have four residents who have signed up to speak. Are any of those residents here to speak in favor of the development? If not, we will move to those here to speak in opposition, beginning with, we have Mr. William Reynolds.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Bill Reynolds, and I reside at 435 Park Brook Way, Canton, Georgia, which is in Great Sky. And I am extremely concerned about this project and the impact that it's going to have on the entire community and the infrastructure of the community. The biggest concern right off the bat is traffic, and I don't know if any of you have been at the corner of Reinhard College Parkway and Reservoir Drive when school, in the middle school that's there right now, is either entering into session or letting out at the end of the day. People are wrapped around the street all the way back practically onto Riverstone. It takes a long, long time to get through that area. And now, I understand there's gonna be a high school placed in that area. There's already been another apartment complex for that area that's been approved. There is an amusement park with other dense housing that's going to be down there on the Riverstone area. There is going to be incredible traffic and the quality of life for the residents of Great Sky, and frankly, some of the other residents in the area is just going to deteriorate. I moved here from Gwinnett County. One of the reasons we moved here from Gwinnett County was to get away from the crazy development and the crazy traffic, and this is very, very concerning to me. My greatest concern is that, when I moved to Gwinnett almost 30 years ago, it was billed as the fastest-growing county in Georgia, if not in the United States. And Cherokee is now in that same boat. My fear is that you are turning Cherokee into Gwinnett. Please don't do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if I mispronounce your name, you correct me when you get to the microphones.
Great, actually.
Oh, good.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll try to be as brief as I can. I made some notes that I wanted to put down, and first off, Landever has come into Great Sky and has done a great job. They've really stepped up things, but you gotta understand, Landever's a development-- oh, I'm sorry. Bob Stelic, Stelic was great, Three Tan Tupelo Tribe, and Southern Lights.
Mr. Stelic, could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, ma'am. Is that better? Landever has been really helpful in Great Sky, and I've been there for 15 years, and we've gone through a number of developers that have really been not so much. They've done a great job, but you gotta understand, they're developers, and as you listen to what they're promising and what they're gonna do, always remember that it's their first interest that they've got in mind, not the residents nor the future residents, and that's understandable, because they wanna make money, you know, and you can always see what they're doing already by building these low-value homes. With them, it's quantity over quality right now. They're not building the high ends, and you look at Laurel Canyon, a more newer development, they're in the million-dollar range. Well, this developer feels that these houses in the $350,000, $400,000 range on small lots is what people want, but it's not what the development first started with. They got upset last year when they didn't get their way. They sent out a letter to all the members complaining a little bit that they lost their way, and another reason you gotta understand that these are a developer, I wanna quote from that letter, where they said that the city council's denial forces us to examine how to proceed with the successful buildout of Great Sky. We will be diverting funds. So, are they telling the homeowners of Great Sky that they're gonna take our HOA funds and have over the last year? Because they didn't get their way, you know, it's like kids, you know, grabbing up their toys and going home mad. And you can also see how mad they got because Pod 18 had a CUP, had a cup with it as well, and they were promising all sorts of different things, and the layout was terrific, and a pool and everything else. Well, when they didn't get their way, what did they do? They decided to pull the cup, then they went back to what they originally planned of the lower-cost housing that's going in. What they did is they went in and they clear-cut all the trees up to the road, which is also a violation of the 2000 master plan, which is something that I'll have to address later. But, you could see that that's their mentality, so when you make a decision here on what they're asking for, remember that their interest is not the best interest of the residents right now. And something that has come up since last year, I asked for a copy of the plan, because the plan, this 2000 master plan, was what everybody's governing their decisions by. I wanted to see it, so I asked Mr. Patton and their department, and bought a copy of it, and have read it over the last year, and find some differences of what the plan, what they're proposing to what's in the master plan that has been identified. And again, if you'll allow me to read from page 30, Pod 16 currently consists of 21.4 acres, not 69 acres. Now, they do talk about if the outer loop is not built, or the mall is not built, they're in the process of negotiating and buying additional land, and they talk about buying 40 acres, not 48 acres. So, you know, if we're gonna follow this master plan and this document, I've gotta find out, and maybe I'm misinformed, that there's some additional amendments that I don't know about. Perhaps the previous council, previous mayor approved something outside of this master plan. And I can tell that there's a little bit of trouble there, because I had asked Mr. Patton if he could help me bring into light where this 69.1 acres comes from, and why is the 15 houses per acre assigned to it? And he said that he thought it was, as far as for Great Sky, the 100 acres and the 40 acres, the 100 additional lots, Great Sky Project as a whole is not specific to Pod 16. I don't know how he could see that or say that, because if you look at the permitted land uses, again, in this document that we use as the governing document, it says specifically, the land area in Pod 16, it doesn't say in entire Great Sky, which has permitted uses-- and I wanna stop for a minute-- the permitted uses for Pod 16 can be anything. It could be a dump of water, it could be anything. So, understanding that, but you also gotta keep in mind, when this was written, they assumed that there was gonna be a mall, and the outer loop was gonna be right up against this Pod 16, like Cumberland Mall. If you can imagine Cumberland Mall, that's what they were envisioning, so of course, you're gonna permit this property to have anything you want, convention center, hotels and whatnot. So, don't allow that threat to sway you, because I think you may have some recourse, and maybe our attorney might have some recourse in that, the fact that what the permit was stated for at that time was based on a decision that there was gonna be a mall and an outer loop. That didn't occur, so I hope the decision that we made last year, someone realized, yeah, it's not the same area as it was thought to be 20 years ago. But, it also says in here that this land area in Pod 16, with everything that it's permitted for, may increase 44 acres, not 48, 44 acres, not 48 acres, if, and again, it goes into if the outer loop, as shown in the master plan, doesn't occur. And that's great. It didn't occur, so they should be allowed that 44 acres, as they, not 40, I don't know where 48 came from, but it says in the plan, 44. But, then here's the caveat that I don't think every, and I don't understand why this is not part of it. It says, and again, it's part of Pod 16, if this 44-acre tract becomes part of viewpoint, Great Sky, because it was gonna be called viewpoint at the time, the total units permitted for this project will increase by a maximum of 100 residential units. Not 400, 100 for that 44 acres, not 15 units per acre. It's pretty straightforward here, and they go into the 2,200 units up to 2,300 to 2,500 if they get an additional 100 acres. But, is that all that was in there? Is that all that they talked about? No, they went in into further detail into the-- oh, shoot. I'm hoping not to lose my place-- into the section where they did talk about, we're not gonna allow any more development than the 100 units. Gentlemen, traffic, they even addressed it in the permit. I don't know if you had a chance to read that, but they talked about the number of trips that Pod 16 would generate if they had 100 homes, if the total of 300 homes. And they said, and I don't know who uses this number, who came up with this, if the DOT did or who did, but this would generate approximately 2,220 trips per day based on Pod 16, at 21.4 acres would contain a maximum of 300 residential units. So, on several points in this document, it talks about what the limits are, and I want you to take that into consideration. And perhaps Mr. Patton can show me some document where we did approve, and there was an amendment, for some reason, we decided to obscure the number and say, okay, 69 acres and 15 units. I can't imagine how we did that.
We have reached our time limit.
I'm sorry.
I know we have two other citizens who have signed up to speak. Does counsel, would the council like to extend the--
I'd like to make a motion to extend time limit for 15 minutes.
15 minutes for both sides. Motion with second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll just end real quickly with this 2,200. It comes out to seven trips per residence. If they go to 800 homes in this area, you know, and I did the math, that's 6,000 trips, and as he pointed out, there's a high school, a middle school, another apartment, it runs into apartments, there's apartments next to it, we're going apartment crazy, we're gonna have thousands of people, and who's at the back end of the bus? Great Sky. So, more, 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 build, build, build. I'd like you to keep all this in mind, and I thank you for the time, and the additional time. Thank you.
Sir, I have a problem with my job, so all of you, if you have more to say, because we're adding all the points that you've talked about, if you have more, you want to say? No, I hate all the points, and another few, which are, I hope that you're looking to find out. Hey? Hi, my name is Rob Taylor. I'm a resident of Great Sky. My address is 317 Mount Laurel Walk. First, I wanted to thank Ms. McGrew and Ms. Wilson and Mr. Peppers for meeting with several residents last week to discuss what was going on. I took that information back to my little part of Great Sky. I live in a small section, talk to many of the residents, and I can tell you that the, almost unanimously, we have zero appetite for any more approval of apartments there. However, that wasn't the question that we were posed with. The question that I posed them were, would we rather accept this new proposed plan or go to court? And I did kind of an online survey, and out of the 25 people that responded to that survey, 18 people voted that they would rather have the known over the unknown and approve the plan as presented here. There were only, I think, three or four people that voted that they would rather go to court. But, if you build it, they will come. They'll come to overcrowded streets, they'll come to a sewer that's at capacity, and they will come to a school system that's busting at the seams. Overall, Great Sky just, we know that within a small diameter of Great Sky, there are several new projects coming onboard, and some that have already been built, and we just feel like we're being overrun with non-resident, or I'm sorry, non-owner occupied homes, and we would like to see the reversal of that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was me.
Okay. Okay, that's all we have, signed up to speak in opposition, so I guess we'll yield back to developer for rebuttals or any final remarks?
Thank you. I'm not sure I can go back through the history of all this. My client bought this out of foreclosure in 2007. We're certainly aware of the 2000 plan, because that set the bar at a much higher number of units than we're talking about now. I don't think the city has, throughout the period of litigation and discussions, they've not disputed the numbers that we're working off of, which again, are that the master plan that you approved had 798 units in-- plan that you approved had 798 units in Pod 16. Overall, it was a substantial reduction. So if you're talking about traffic or anything else, we've got many fewer units here. The, in terms of, of conditions, obviously, we could negotiate conditions. We have been discussing conditions with your staff and Mr. Dyer to ensure that we do whatever we commit to you that we'll do. We, again, as I said, we tried to follow the housing studies, which the city provided to us in determining what were the appropriate types of residences to have here. We responded to the idea of providing access to the lake and, and connecting to the trail system. So again, the density is substantially reduced, not only over what was approved in 2000, but further over what was approved in the master plan amendment of a year and a half ago. We would, we can go back to court. We prefer not to. We would like to work out something with the city if we can. We have tried to respond in the plan that Mr. Sands described a minute ago to the issues that we'd understood were important to the city. If there are other things that we need to address, please let us know and we will certainly try to do that. But again, I think this is a, the plan that you approved a year and a half ago substantially reduced the number of apartments. Certainly, it reduced the overall density. This, our suggestion reduces that further. It provides other types of housing. It provides other things that we thought we, we had understood were important to the city, such as access to the lake. We would like for you to consider approving this plan. Again, we would like, we, we want to come back. In, in the meantime, either tonight or before we come back, if you could let us know, let us have feedback on the plan or additional considerations that you want us to try to incorporate. I think that would be constructive. Thank you.
Further comments. That's all we have signed up to speak. So at this point, we will close the public hearing and open up to panel, to council for discussion. So I did just want to start out that, you know, we, we, several years ago, we did impose the CUP process to, to address, you know, some of the various issues we're discussing tonight. I think at the time, we, we said, you know, we weren't necessarily opposed to apartments, but the CUP process gave us a chance to review apartments, where they were going to in, in the city, what area they were going to, what type of apartments, what type of housing. You know, since that time, we, we have done our housing studies citywide. So we do have a better sense of how many units we do need and what type of units and where we need them. And we have had developments since that time. So we do have more data to consider now when we're making these decisions. But that was the, you know, the original purpose of the CUP. And that's, you know, somewhat of what brings us here tonight. That's, that's being challenged. So, Mr. Estes?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think just a couple of things that, you know, I guess I try to keep an open mind with, with this discussion. You know, I was on, on council in 2019 when we did deny it. And, you know, I think what I, what I struggled with is this area, you know, was planned to have this number of units. I think the, the master plan in 2000 although, did not have them all in this tiny pod, right? They were in Great Sky. So, so I think I, I struggled with that. And it, it's the density really that, that does concern me. And then the second piece that's, that's come up, and I definitely agree with it, is the, the, the infrastructure to support it. You know, now with a, a middle schooler and soon to be high schooler, you know, I think while the, the broader area of Reinhardt College Parkway and whatnot is, is certainly sufficient for flow of traffic, it's that, that intersection there that definitely creates a, a major concern because it does not have a traffic light. The, you know, I think our, our, our city definitely has a need for townhomes and apartments, but I, I, I'm not convinced that this pod is where that, that need is. You know, definitely, you know, I, I definitely have to yield to kind of the, the feedback of citizens. I know every time we talk word one and the word apartments, my inbox goes through the roof. And so I, I definitely see a correlation there. And so, you know, we, we have gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback and I do appreciate a lot of the citizens coming out and, and speaking tonight. And, and you know, that, that's really kind of where my head comes back to this is, you know, what, what is the, what does the citizen want and need? And the final thing I'd say is I, I do appreciate, you know, the, the work of the developer with being creative. I think this is, is, you know, using the access to the lake and, and the trails is, is, is great. It's inspiring. It's a, it's a, it's a good use of, of, you know, trying to work with us, you know, to come to, come to a solution that, that, that does benefit. But again, I, I go back to, you know, and I've been vocal about this. I, I think 798 units in this small little area is just too many. And then I'll yield to the residents to say what they want. And I don't see a lot of them saying, we want more.
I think Mr. Carlin.
Mr. Carlin. Good. Thank you. I've given a lot of thought to this. I had to write down my notes. Do want to thank the petitioner for coming in and trying to resolve this issue. This is certainly the way to, to handle it. Want to remind everybody about what's at stake. The city were to win the current litigation, the applicant could come in and bring this same project to us. So we'd be considering it anyway. So I'm glad that we have the opportunity now to look at it and maybe get some of our thoughts in early, whether or not the court goes forward or not. If the city loses however, the petitioner could build over 1,000 apartments on the site. And I don't think anybody on council and certainly not anybody who spoke in opposition today wants that. The project hasn't really generated the avalanche of emails. And if your inbox is different than my inbox, then feel free to forward them.
My point would be wait for the next two weeks.
I got you. The, the concerns that are raised though center around a couple of assertions that I want to make sure we talk about. First is the complaint that it would stress the traffic on Reservoir Drive. And I'm having trouble, I, I appreciate that. And I have to drive that every day during school and around school time. So I'm familiar with the issue. But Reservoir Drive is a four lane road. It's divided. It's a large artery. It empties into one of the largest roads in the city. And I know the city is working to try to get a light at Reservoir and Reinhardt. And that effort is not going to stop. One concern that I do think has a lot of merit as far as traffic is that light at Teasley Middle School. Teasley Middle School, you know, during, during pickup and drop off, as the gentleman said, is, he's absolutely right. I'm, I'm in that traffic. I'm part of that problem. One thing I'd like to see us do is have a traffic light there and help break up that traffic, especially during the busiest times of the day, during school. To that end, a little bit of spoiler, I'm going to ask the petitioner make a $75,000 payment towards a traffic signal at that intersection, similar to what we did at Grand Reserve, those two payments. We should be able to have a traffic signal there. The other complaint that we've seen through the email, and I'm thankful not to hear it too much here tonight, is the lowering neighboring home prices and increasing crime, which is a little bit of a zombie assertion that's been refuted and debunked, but has risen again from the dead. I made a survey of the studies on that issue. I'm not one to rely on my own issue, my own belief, my own assertion. I want to look at what the science says. And, and looking at the studies that have studied that issue, I can't really fault the people for holding those thoughts. It's appealing to think that apartments bring crime. It's appealing to think apartments lower home value. The science just doesn't bear that out. They reach a different conclusion. That's not my opinion or assertion. That's the conclusion of the people who study that issue. Specifically, this project will command rents in excess of $2,000. And according to the science, crime and property value impact is mitigated by higher rents and strong neighborhood architecture and design. Two things that we, one of those things we have the control of here in the city for this project. To the petitioner, I appreciate them reducing the number of units and their decision to add public access to the reservoir, as well as the restaurant and brewery on the property. However, at present, the way things are in this proposal, I can't support it. I can't support it, but I can make some suggestions about something I might support. First, I would like to see the total number of units drop from 798 to 700. I'd like for that cut to be taken completely out of the apartments, which would leave you with 502 apartments spread over both sides of the road and the remainder being a mix of townhomes, duplexes, single family. That's less than half of the apartments that are currently under consideration in litigation. Second, to alleviate traffic, I gave you the spoiler. I would like to see the petitioner contribute $75,000 to the establishment of a light at Reservoir in Hickory Log prior to receiving a land disturbance permit. Third, I would support a condition of safe pedestrian crossing from one side of the project to the other. And I'd ask the developer to work with the city to locate and design that crossing. If there is a curve there, there's a hill, it's going to be difficult. But I think that working together, we can find a way to make that safe so people on both sides could get to, get to the restaurant, get to the brewery, get to the reservoir. Fourth, I would like to support it, I would support a condition for the architecture to reflect a city streetscape style, similar to like a brownstone with consistency on both sides. I'd like to see it be varying roof lines and enhanced landscaping and incorporating native plants, which I know Ms. McGrew would like. Finally, I support the current plan's commitment to public access to the reservoir and the activities available. It's the duty of this council to ensure that our reservoir, our greatest untapped resource, is protected and accessible to the public. I also approve the restaurant brewery concept under consideration. I think that's going to be a hit, people coming up and using the reservoir for that. So I've got five conditions I'm thinking about asking, that I'm, that I'm suggesting. Reduce the total number of units to 700, with only 502 being apartments and the remainder being a mix of townhomes, duplexes and single family. $75,000 contribution to the traffic signal at Teasley, a safe pedestrian crossing, consistent city style architecture with enhanced landscaping using native species and ensure public access to the reservoir and the restaurant brewery concept. I can't get on board with what's here right now, but I think you asked for some input and some thoughts on what we might like. That's something I think I could support. And I'll look to council to see if they could support those conditions. Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I have many questions. And Mr. Peppers, would you please explain the issue of lake access?
When Hickory Log Creek was approved by the state of Georgia as a raw water drinking storage facility, it was required that the city provide a reservoir master plan to the state that was approved by EPD. About two years ago, Environmental Protection Division made some changes to their own processes with these types of facilities to open those up statewide for more recreational access. The city of Canton has not proposed any changes to the reservoir management part of that. But we have hired a design firm to look at the topography of the 150 foot buffer that surrounds the reservoir that is protected at this time, to see what we might be able to do from a recreational standpoint. There's about 12 miles of shoreline along the reservoir, some of it on Great Sky, some of it at First Baptist Church, some of it adjacent to property that the school district owns on the, on the bluff side, some of it controlled by Technology Park Atlanta. And so at this time, what we have is just some very basic information about that buffer, the landscape that's in there, the topography that's in there. And then we have some, some designs that have been put together of where a trail could be created based upon that topography and what's in there. We haven't submitted anything like that to the state. It hasn't been presented yet to the council. But the applicant did ask if we were working on that process. And I think that they have, as part of, as part of their design, tried to incorporate some of those ideas into that design as you see access to the trail. Again, they wouldn't be able to build any of that in the buffer at this point because there hasn't been a change to that reservoir management plan and it hasn't been approved by the state of Georgia. We're hopeful that we can have a proposal on that reservoir management plan this fall to submit to EPD for their review. Based on what we're looking at, we don't see any issues with what we've seen at other raw water drinking storage facilities. We have talked with our partner of the reservoir, which is Cobb County Marietta Water Authority and their staff about what our, our thoughts are. And, and ultimately they said, you know, you're going to have to get whatever it is approved by EPD. So at this time, we're, we're still in that research side of that project. We haven't even gotten into an implementation side or, or an approval side, so to speak.
A question about when the property was purchased by Landever. I want to, I need, think that we all need to know the exact date the property was purchased and when the CUP went into effect. That we, we would know if the applicant had the opportunity to be aware of our CUP process. Also, I have concerns about traffic because there is a proposal of a plaza, shopping, commercial, office, multi-use and a convenience store on the corner of Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive. So I think that's another thing that we need to be aware of and work that into our thoughts. Now, Mr. Peppers, there were several pods that were approved for apartments. I could be wrong on this number, but it seemed like the num, total number of units approved was about 1,100 for the pot. And then a total housing unit approval for 2,300, including single family homes and apartments. And I've heard tonight that, from the applicant, that 2,000 apartments were approved for Great Sky.
Great Sky's initial master plan is one of the odd ones that the city had in that it had a cap of total number of residential units. And it had a multitude of uses within these pods. And basically, if you built in this pod, you could do a maximum density of that, but you still couldn't exceed the total amount of housing for the development. So it gave the developer the flexibility to move residential units between pods and build a maximum in one pod, but maybe, maybe not a maximum in another. One of the things that does come up routinely, and, and I think it was brought up by, by one of the speakers, was this question about the additional 44 acres. And what's listed in the actual master plan is 44 plus acres. Part of the reason why it's listed as a plus is because at the time when this development was going through, the city was just in the initial planning processes on a reservoir. And ultimately, as the reservoir was built, the topography of the reservoir and the amount of land that was used for the reservoir and purchased for the reservoir changed. The height, the water, the boundaries changed over time. There was also the purchase of land from First Baptist Church. Some of the, some of the acres that were originally recorded as part of those have changed over the years because of the elevation of the reservoir and, and where things moved. What we have to fall back to is what's actually on the plats and what's actually on the tax maps.
Okay. This question may be for Mr. Dyer, but we'll field it through you first. If we approve this rendering, does this constitute a master plan approval and that they have to build what's on this rendering?
Council could condition anything they want. Ultimately, it's not a master plan amendment. It would be a conditional use permit and you could make it site plan specific.
And as we've conditioned other CUPs, we've seen this developer revert back to what was allowed on that parcel through the zoning and not go with our decisions in the CUPs.
The difference with that particular thing is the city's definition of multifamily is three or more contiguous units, whether it's fee simple or, or not fee simple. So in this particular case, if the developer chose to do something among the list of other uses that are allowed in that pod, the developer could do that. But if they did anything that included multifamily, they would have to come back for a conditional use permit.
Right. If we deny these apartments and this rendering, are we denying the developer the right to see a profit? Your opinion?
I think the market would dictate that. I don't think I could give an opinion on that.
Okay. To the housing study, does this exceed? To the housing study, does this exceed our housing units that our housing study said that we could absorb?
I would turn that question over to Mr. Patton, I think he has the data on that.
In the housing study, there was a projection of a total number of residential units that were needed. Through 2029, the number of new residential units projected was three thousand one hundred ninety units. There have been some projects that have already been approved by city council that have not begun construction or anything because of limited wastewater treatment. The total number of those units that have been approved is one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine units. There is another public hearing on tonight's agenda that is a part of that one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine units. That if city council approves that conditional use permit approval, that one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine units will be reduced because the proposal with that public hearing is a reduction of the total number of units on that project. And if I might add, when city council approved master plan amendments associated with Great Sky in 2019, part of those master plan approvals removed the approval of multifamily from all parcels other than this Pod sixteen.
Okay.
I believe fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, there were three or four other pods or tracks within the Great Sky master plan that did have an allowance for multifamily. And what city council approved with a master plan amendment in 2019 removed the ability of the developer to place apartments on any of those other pods other than Pod sixteen.
If we deny the apartments and it goes back to court, judge rules in favor of Landover, do we have any recourse to ensure that Landover builds something attractive like this, or can they just throw up anything?
They will still have to go to the Oversight Committee for approval because apartments are classified as commercial property and our design guidelines and the Unified Development Code specify that commercial properties, everything other than single-family detached, has to go to the Oversight Committee and our standards are in place to the exterior of the buildings.
Right. They have graciously agreed to build fewer units in this rendering. Will the Oversight Committee be able to limit them to this number of units rather than the maximum allowed?
No, the Oversight Committee only deals with the exterior materials of the units. Any limitation on the number of units would be with city council.
Would they come back to council to request the number of units? Or would it be a done deal in court?
Well, generally, and the attorney can chime in also, generally, coming out of a court case involving land use matters, the courts would remand something back to the city council to constitutionally zone it.
Okay.
I need to follow up on that.
Okay.
This case is a little bit different than the normal zoning challenge because one of their challenges is to our CUP process. So the judge would be ruling whether we could have even required them to get a CUP. So if the judge rules that we could not have required that, they revert back to the zoning as it is.
I think our CUP relates beautifully to our roadmap and the tenant about creating desirable, beautiful, productive neighborhoods, so I'm not concerned about that at all.
Well, your question was what will be the result of the lawsuit? The result of the lawsuit, they would not come back to city council.
Right, right.
Can I follow up, do you mind if I follow up on that with Mr. Dyer? So you're saying the nature of the lawsuit is challenging our CUP process?
There are several, at least two grounds, maybe more than that. One of them is the process itself, yes.
So it not only could possibly have impact to this case, but future CUP cases?
If there was any, yeah, anybody that had had prior approval of multifamily that would have the same argument.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to close with thanking Mr. Carlin for your suggestions and your conditions, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. I had some just questions also on the original Pod master plan. Mr. Patton, and I know that some question about, and I know we transferred multifamily from other pods to this one, but Pod sixteen, the original master plan, could you remind us what all allowed uses were for that pod?
Well, it allowed...
What the developer could, is today build...
I don't have the particular list directly in front of me, but it did allow conference centers, retail, office, residential apartments. It had different densities based upon whether it was going to be single-family, single-family attached, or multiple-family. The multifamily was fifteen units to the acre in the way the original master plan read. It didn't require all of the uses, it was a kind of a pick and choose by the developer, if you will, amongst those uses. I will email all of the council members a list of everything that was listed and approved for Pod sixteen prior to you making the decision.
So just to be clear, the developer today could go out and market Pod sixteen to a resort, hotels, conference center?
City manager gave me a copy from the original permitted land uses, hotel, conference center, office, retirement, community, independent, dependent care facilities, other uses listed in PUD planned unit development of the old city Canton zoning resolution, single-family detached dwellings, single-family attached dwellings, multifamily dwellings, garages, attached or detached garage apartments, private recreation areas, golf course, uses listed in C2 general commercial of the old zoning ordinance.
So it's not like we're trying to limit the use of this pod? Ms. Smith?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to assure the audience member that I am a parent of a middle-schooler and I have sat in that line for forty minutes every day this week, thank you. If you... It will improve in the next two weeks, but if y'all go back over the last year, you will see that this council is fighting and fighting very hard for a light at that intersection where Teasley is, as well as the Reinhardt and Reservoir. Unfortunately, that second intersection that I just mentioned is not under our control. It's under the control of Georgia DOT, so we cannot just put a light there. So if you would like to email me, I would be delighted to give you the G dot contact so you could email them and let them know that we need a light there. And we are working hard for the light at Teasley as well. I did want to point out that when, in 2019, when we approved the master plan amendment but denied the CUP for apartments in this pod, there was broad support from the residents of Great Sky to please approve the master plan amendment and the CUP because the apartments were moving outside beyond the monuments of Great Sky and becoming a separate entity that had nothing to do with the Great Sky HOA. So time has passed and maybe the sentiments have changed, but I just want to remind people of those conversations and those emails, council especially, the support was broad to please approve this. But council felt like it didn't meet the vision of our roadmap and it didn't meet what we needed in our housing study. So here we are. I would like to express support for Mr. Carlin's conditions, especially architecture. I've been on record before as expressing my dismay with Grand Reserve and how it looks. And if that's something that could go to the Oversight Committee and the Oversight Committee can say, yeah, that's lovely, build it, I am not for that. I am for public access. If the original CUP had been approved in 2019, all this land along the reservoir would only be usable by the people who live in those apartments. But it, as Mr. Carlin said, it's an untapped resource. We're working to tap it, we're working to make it available for everyone in Canton. And I don't want it to be just available to people who live in this apartment complex. So that's a key to me, is making, keeping that public. I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson and then Mr. Tullow.
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say that the person who is the Department of Transportation, the Georgia Department of Transportation representative for our area, his name is Jeff Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. So he's the person you get in touch with about a traffic light. The other thing, I just want to make sure that none of the residential units that have been proposed will be owner-occupied, they're all rental, is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Tullow?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few statements, I'll be relatively brief. First off, I do like the latest rendering. I think it's much more in line with what this council has expressed to the developer that we would be more amenable to. And I want to reiterate what Ms. Schmidt just said, that this is clearly not Great Sky. It was Great Sky, but it is no longer. It's a development that's on Reservoir Drive. And yes, it will impact the people that come in and leave the rear entrance to Great Sky, but clearly not, clearly not Great Sky. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out because I've been listening tonight and I think it's very important to listen to what Mr. Stellic said in that when, about a year ago, whenever this came before council, a year and a half ago, it seemed that Landover was, well, it seemed to me at the time, it seems to me now because it's been reiterated, that it's very much private equity-driven. In other words, it's all about the money. When they didn't get their way, they pulled some amenities, according to Mr. Stellic, and I think that's something that we need to keep in mind as we consider, as a council and residents, as you consider this potential development. Another thing that came to mind, Mr. Taylor mentioned that eighteen of twenty-five, which is seventy-two percent of the people in his straw poll, liked the idea of the bird in hand. They'd rather have it approved than go to court and potentially lose it. And that number, by the way, happens to be a thousand twenty-five units. It could go from seven ninety-eight up to a thousand twenty-five units. So I would certainly be in favor of the list that Mr. Carlin mentioned, including and specifically the safety measures, the crosswalk, the traffic signal. Grand Reserve has, as it's been mentioned, agreed to put in seventy-five thousand. My understanding is the total cost of a traffic signal is around a hundred and fifty thousand, so they would essentially be splitting the cost with Grand Reserve. The other thing that I would like clarity from the applicant is, it's been mentioned a couple of times, and the attorney mentioned it tonight, that they've been in conversations with the consultant, H G O R is the name of the company. And I would like to have further detail, if detail has not been arrived at yet between now and perhaps the next meeting, I would like to hear more information about what that relationship, what that partnership looks like and what they've agreed to or will agree to in terms of that partnership and what the applicant will ask of H G O R in terms of access and alignment, if you will, to the rest of the work that H G O R is doing for the city. So that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tullow. I appreciate all the conversation and dialogue on this. It's complicated and it's been a long issue and process. I appreciate the compromise and the conditions that have been mentioned by Mr. Carlin and the support the other council members have shared for that. Couple of my opinions, and one reason I asked Mr. Dyer to confirm that, you know, this case is not solely about this process, about this project, but also our CUP process, which I think is vitally important to our roadmap and how we develop the city. One of the reasons that we developed our roadmap is so that the city could be in charge of its own destiny and how we develop it, not developers. So I think the CUP process is important to the city, I think it's worth fighting for. I know that we would run a risk of, you know, if we, you know, did lose the lawsuit, you know, that we could run a risk of, you know, gaining more units. I don't see why a developer would have a nice-looking project like this and would want to revert to something cheaper with lower rents. I hope that they wouldn't do that in good faith, but you never know, that would be their choice. I think we have some controls over that, limited controls over that. But I believe our CUP process is worth fighting for. I'd rather us not, you know, anticipate what the courts may or may not do. We've been told our case is, you know, relatively strong. I do believe in compromise and, you know, and time and place for that. But I, at this point, I would err on the side of fighting for our citizens and what they want. I mean, I hear constantly that they want less apartments. We do have in our housing study, you know, total numbers of units needed to 2029. That is total units, you know, single-family, multifamily. Right now, as we all know, that stat is very much in favor of multifamily, and so I don't know, we don't want that whole inventory, you know, all of our housing needs taken up in multifamily. But again, I think all those considerations need to be brought to the table, but I just, you know, that, there's some opinions I wanted to share is that we're here to represent our citizens and what they want. I also think the reservoir is, as Mr. Carlin said, one of our greatest untapped resources, and it is a community resource, it's not just for, on that side for residents of Great Sky or the residents of this project. If it was developed, and I do appreciate the access points the developer is proposing, and if this project is approved by council with whatever conditions, I would love to see a condition added that those public access points and, you know, the brewery or restaurant, those components of the project are constructed first. But, because I think that, you know, the shared, the reservoir is a community asset, and I think that's the most, I think it's one of the reasons, you know, we denied the project in the first place because we thought there was a better use of the land on the reservoir, which is a beautiful asset for the city, for the entire city. So those are just some of my comments that I wanted to share, and I think it's important to share. I appreciate all the citizens that spoke tonight and came out and who have been emailing us and contacting us. And as Mr. Pepper says, this is the formal process that's recorded and the sort of the legal part of the public hearing. But you are encouraged to continue to contact us via email, send us your thoughts and your feedback on this project over the next two weeks as we're considering it, you know, the feedback loop is not closed. We've been trying to expand our input for citizens on all projects, and we want to hear from you and your thoughts. And I think all the information in the straw poll is taken, all that is good information to know because at the end of the day, we represent you and we want to make the right choice that works for our citizens the best, so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Carlin?
Just want to make sure I write down the condition right, the way you're suggesting it, you could support the five other conditions if we had a sixth for building the restaurant brewery concept, as long as it's built first for sooner access to all residents from Canton and to draw.
Yes, the public access points, yes.
And just for those of you who voiced support for those five, I don't have an issue with adding that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did I hear you say that also access to the reservoir in your condition?
Yes, the public access and the public components of the brewery and...
Would you include the trail along the... Would you include the trail along the property line also?
Yes, I would, so.
I think that's part of my, that's part of the first five, I think, as well. So I think we're, we're talking, it sounds like we're talking about the same information at this point.
Yeah. If it comes to that, so my preference would be to, to fight for our CUP and, and our citizens. So, but, but again, compromise is compromise and, and.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying, are you saying, yes, you can get on board with those five if we add the sixth? Or you're saying if we?
I'm saying if we have conditions, I want, we have conditions, I would, I would like to see that added to the condition. So I'd like to see that condition as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Restus?
And I, I guess I'd just say, since it appears I may have the dissenting view, since I, I don't have any other solutions, I'm, I'm just going to defer to citizen feedback, you know, again, coming up on four years where we've had these in Ward One and, and you just get inundated with a lot of concerns because of the infrastructure. I think it's, it's good that the, the citizens here, the compromise suggestions that have been proposed by Mr. Carlin and also now that this is becoming more public, even though, you know, it was posted, you know, as the agenda item and certainly many people came to, to, to speak. You know, I would, would encourage people to just take some time and, and, you know, review, share their thoughts and, and that way we can all make a, make a better informed decision.
Okay. And, and just for clarification, I, I do think we have enough apartments in Ward One also and, but I, I do share those concerns as well. Ms. Schmidt?
I just wanted to ask residents who might still want to be emailing feedback to, that the question is, is it, is it something along the lines of what's been presented tonight? Or is it go to court and possibly end up with the original proposal in the CUP, which is like Grand Reserve and a higher number of apartments with possibly no public access to the reservoir? Do you want council to take that risk? Or do you want us to try to condition a better development? So if you're sending emails, that's what, that's the, that's what's up in the air. So, I mean, I, I think on record before is that the developer, we would love it. We've said before, please market it to a hotel, give it to a resort, sell it for that kind of thing, all those lists. And, and they have said that, no, they're not able to do that. I mean, maybe they could do that now, but, you know, I just want to be clear that we've had, these discussions have been ongoing and are on record if anybody wants to look up the history of the discussions as well. But that's the kind of feedback, that's the kind of specific feedback that would help council make a decision.
And if I may, in addition to that, I mean, I think you're absolutely right. When you're saying, yes, these two options, but if one of the questions that we're struggling with is what conditions should be there, what rules should be in place? We have a unique opportunity here to sort out conditions to help resolve this issue. So as you're thinking about your emails, I'd love to hear thoughts on what other conditions we may not have thought of, how, somebody have a more creative solution to how to fix the traffic other than a traffic light at Teasley and some sort of signaled safe crosswalk across the way? I'm all ears. I mean, that's, that's what we're here to do is find out what it, if there is a way to make this work, what would you want it to be? If there's not a way to make it work, then it's a no and we can't do it. But then we're back to possibly getting that thousand without any kind of access. But if we can find a way, I'm interested in those reports as well and solutions as well. Thank you.
Ms. McGee?
I just want to say I'm still comfortable with our denial. I think Ward One is full and I don't want to see an overs, a saturation of apartments in Ward One. I think possibly a complex might be useful by the new hospital. An apartment complex might be useful i- in South Canton. I, I think Ward One's full and I'm comfortable going to court and letting it be decided by a judge.
Okay.
Tonight I am. Now, of course, if I hear differently from the residents, that's fine. I'm, I'm very much agreeable to compromise.
Ms. Restus?
Yeah, and, and to that point, I, I guess I'm, I am looking for feedback on, do you want density? You know, because again, the master plan said you can have density and/or other options that Mr. Patton prepared. So we said, yes, we're good with other options effectively because we denied the CUP back in 2019. And that was again, based on Ward One, even though Great Sky residents were, were in favor of, you know, moving it outside the monuments. So I would be interested in hearing about all of the above as well as, as density, yes or no? Because I think that plays into this as well.
I mean, we, we, this council did inherit those master plans from nineteen ninety-nine and, and two thousand, and I think we all know they're, they're, they're greatly flawed. And we've been dealing with them as best we can as, as we move forward. And we, we've learned some valuable lessons that I think we have much better plan in place going forward and, and, and safety measures in place, but we're, we're still dealing with some issues, some, some development that was proposed for the city that did not happen. And so we're trying to do a better job going forward. So I appreciate all the good work and dialogue and constructive comments. And again, we, we look forward to hearing from the citizens what you have to say. So, okay. So we need to move forward to our next case. So case, public hearing B, public hearing discussion for case CUP two-one-zero-five-dash-zero-one-two for John Lloyd requesting conditional use permit approval to develop a one hundred and fifty-six town home project located at ten-ten Marietta Road. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a public hearing in regards to case.
Mr. Patton, do you want to pause until? Okay. Thank you. Let's proceed.
Yes, sir. I could have raised my voice and spoke over the noise. This is case CUP two-one-oh-five-dash-oh-one-two located at ten-ten Marietta Road. This was previously approved for conditional use permit for a two-hundred-twenty-four-unit multifamily apartment project. With this case, the applicant developer is coming back to City Council requesting conditional use permit approval so that this project can move forward with a one hundred and fifty-six unit town home project. That is a reduction of sixty-eight units from what was previously approved. I will be available to answer questions of council at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. At this point, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to, to present the case.
And now something for, something completely different. Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Huff with the law firm of Sampson, Larkin, and Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this application before you today, as Mr. Patton said. And actually, I've got a, a misstated number there. He's right, it's two-twenty-four is what's approved on the property. It was approved in late 2019. This was the site plan that was presented to y'all at that time and it was approved by this council. And the applicant is proposing to change that to a hundred and fifty-six townhomes. This is the aerial photograph showing the subject properties on the south side of Marietta Road. This is the zoning map showing the RM fifteen, the property that, that we're discussing. It is owned RM fifteen with a CUP for the, the apartments. We had a, a public participation meeting and the people, main people who were in attendance to that meeting were the residents in the subdivision to the, to the east of the subject property that you see here. And some of them are, are present tonight to speak in support of the application, not surprisingly. This is the site plan that we presented to your staff, showing it's the conversion of, from apartments to townhomes. This gives you an aerial overview showing the townhomes in relation to the buffering that is in existence and will remain. So you can see there's good tree buffers between us and the adjacent neighborhood. So this will be an opportunity to provide some housing that is really needed and to Councilman Estes' point, it's in a different area of the city, south side of the city. I think there's a tremendous opportunity for some more housing. It will invigorate the retail that, that could use some more people going to them and, and more investment in some of those retail shops. So we think, as I said, this is something totally different, converting from apartments to townhomes and, and reducing the number by fifty-something units. So we, I, I'm going to, at this time, reserve some time because I think some residents that took the time and I really appreciated, it's easy to get people here to oppose stuff, but it's harder to get people to, to take the time to show up and support. So I'm going to reserve some time after they speak.
Thank you. So we have one resident signed up to speak. Mr. Huff's correct, then, or Mr. Weaver, are you speaking in favor? Okay. So that's the only person we had signed up to speak?
I thought you signed up.
Okay.
In support of it. I, I misunderstood. He was here to show his support, but I thought he was going to. So again, this is, this is an opportunity to get a different housing type in this area that will provide some, you know, investment in the area, provide some shoppers that would be serving the retail. I think this is a really untapped area because the more I look at it, the more I've been on it, you've got so many different ways to get back to the interstate. There's a lot of multiple different ways you can get out, go left, go right, cut, you know, a couple of different ways to get to the interstate. So I think it's a great place and Mr. Lloyd will do a great job with this development and looks forward to moving forward. Glad to answer any questions you have, but it's a straightforward, pretty straightforward case. You want to reduce the number of units and change from apartments to townhomes, that's what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And those to speak in opposition, again, we have one citizen signed up, Mr. Weaver.
Good afternoon, member, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I can, I too perhaps can learn to better appreciate Mr. Huff's original misgivings on my, on my appearance here tonight in respect to his client's project. I can trust and learn to better appreciate why he may have thought that I was here to speak in favor of it. Indeed, he is correct. It does meet well with your roadmap for Canton and, and Canton's success as far as diversifying your homes and making more residential opportunities available to, to your citizens, which is something that you have budgeted for with the new Housing Administration Office that's going to come online soon. But unfortunately, as, as many of you may recall back in 2019, when this project was first put before you, as you may recall, for the, the Jackie Hill Morris Lane, two-hundred-and-two apartment complex, I spoke against it then and now that it's moved across the street, I want to speak against, against it now. I read over all of the documentation that was provided by Mr. Huff and approbation of his client's wishes for the, for the project and I too can learn to better appreciate the constitutional challenge that's already been included in that paperwork because they believe that if the city were to decline to grant favorable disposition on their, on his client's application for, for the grant of approval to move forward in this project, that it would deprive them of the use of their property based on current zoning. However, as a resident of this city and, and someone who actually lives off that very road, I can tell you that it is, it is like Fury. It's like Max's Row with thunder and fury to make a left or right on that blind hill drive that goes down. There, there's inadequate infrastructure to meet with the added traffic congestion that will come from the project, even though his permitting paperwork shows that they, that his client believes that there will be no added traffic burden, something that I, unless they're all going to use only one side of the road for sidewalk as pedestrians, I, I just don't see how that's going to happen. That's a two-lane street that goes to a very convoluted traffic interchange at the top of the hill next to the dealership, which is not adequately prepared for that type of traffic infrastructure. And if you turn right to go downhill, it's still, it's, it's not going to be able to handle that type of, that type of traffic investment there. Also, the city's water department staff has reported that it'll be an additional fifty-five gallons, or fifty-five thousand gallons per day to service as far as wastewater, to service this development, something that your current wastewater treatment plant capacity may not be able to do until the extra two to three million gallons of, of permitting approval process gets approved, hopefully by year 2023, when the wastewater treatment plant expansion project is finished. So again, while I can learn to better appreciate Mr. Huff's desire to, to favorably represent his client and, and to seek your approval for the project and, and to bring a diversified housing development opportunity to a part of the community there in Sunnyside that perhaps could benefit from new investment as it is the older part of town. I just worry aloud that, like I had told you back in 2019, I was going to say it again, there's just, in my personal private beliefs, I don't believe that there's adequate infrastructure, hard infrastructure, wastewater, sewer, traffic, roads, interchange. There's just not enough hard infrastructure there to, to support this type of development. There's already apartments that have already been spliced in on Marietta Road. And I just think that this is going to eventually cause another one for people who are already there because it's just not in my, in my mind's eye, just looking at it geographically and how it's kind of positioned in. I mean, even with a project like this, you would want two points of ingress and egress. And the project plan's in the middle before you, it's literally side by side, there's no traffic light there. It's, you, you want to make a left or right there? I, I'll take you for a drive there if you, if you dare to ride along with me to make those lefts and rights. I kid you not, I've been T-boned almost several times and that's with the existing development and the existing housing infrastructure that's off that road. I mean, he says, well, we can make a left or right and or out either way. Well, which way does he propose that on behalf of his client that you make a left or right? Does he want to make a left onto the, onto the one-lane dead-end road of Jackie Morris? Or does he want to make a right onto the one-end dead-end lane road of Morris Hill? There's just, I just, I mean, I understand private property rights and I understand about if, well, if you deny an economic opportunity as far as zoning and we can't benefit from it, then we'll sue you. I understand all that. But I'm just telling you, don't take my word for it. I, I just don't think that there's adequate infrastructure there to support this. If the infrastructure was in place first, based on your budget that you had recently passed to get the improvements to the Sunnyside part of town first, then come back later in life and say, we have infrastructure here now, now let's talk about this. That'd be great. That'd be, that'd be awesome. But without the adequate infrastructure in place, the hard infrastructure, but I don't make decisions here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
To be clear, it is owned for apartments at the present time. My client can go pull permits and build the apartments that, that were approved two years ago on this property. What we're asking to do is actually reduce the number of units and convert them to townhomes. And actually, one of the, one of the factors in doing this is because we'll be pulling building permits on each unit and that relates to how the sewer is handled and everything. When you build an apartment complex, you're going to build two-hundred-and-fifty units at one time and you, and you buy all that capacity at one time. This will be, as they sell units, they'll be, you know, coming online. So that is actually one of the factors. So I understand Mr. Weaver's comments. I do want to, and I know that lawyers on the council knows, just to be real clear, we submit a constitutional challenge with every zoning application. If you're a zoning lawyer, if you don't submit a constitutional challenge, you're committing malpractice. So I do understand that that sometimes feels a little awkward, but I don't, I want to make, I want to make sure you're clear because it does show up in your agenda like, oh my gosh, it's a constitutional challenge. But that's part of, of the legal process and, and we're. But that's part of the legal process and we're required to file that whenever we bring in a case. But this is an opportunity to approve a project that's reducing the number of the units. So if you're worried about traffic, you're reducing the number of units. If you're worried about the number of apartments, you're reducing the number of apartments. You're converting those apartment units to townhomes. I do not see the negative to this. I only see positives. But sometimes you get jaded by, when you're involved in something. But I only see a positive, positive, and positive to this. And I, and one of the real positives is I hope other people look at this area in the city and see it as a great opportunity, that is a great location for further great development. Thank you.
At this point, we will close the public hearing and open this case up to discussion by council. Ms. McGrew?
I'm curious to know what the provisions are for parking on this development.
Provisions for parking, you would say that all of the parking, there are parking areas that are shown in places. Each unit has a driveway and a garage area. There is additional parking spaces shown on the site plan for visitors, things of that nature.
What about trash pickup?
Trash pickup on this, they have not really addressed that as to whether it would be an individual pickup inside the development or if they're gonna have a container somewhere that folks drop off.
I know you're aware of the situation we have at the Bluffs, but those are rental, so that's considered commercial. These are fee simple, is that correct?
It's my understanding I will confirm that and get that information to council prior to the next meeting.
And if they're fee simple, I'd like to know the price point, please. Also, Mr. Patton, I was wondering if the applicant would be open to reducing the units by eight or nine by removing units 39 through 47 or 70 through 63, which are right square in the middle. And the reason I'm asking this is because this is going to be a community of probably homeowners. And it would be lovely to have a park in the middle of their community for gatherings. And I envision a couple of grills, a couple of swings, place to toss a frisbee, place for the children to gout and enjoy, and for the adults to congregate and enjoy a glass of tea or of their choice and just let it be a real community. So I would like to know if they would be willing to reduce by nine units or eight units, which I think they could make up that amount of money in the purchase price, maybe. Also, can we go to the slide that shows the exterior? Okay. I know you all have heard me talk before about things looking institutional. I think we need to start looking at things as a home, maybe with some awnings on it, archways, and just make it look a little less industrial and institutional and give it some actual curb appeal. Make it inviting and warm, where people want to raise their babies and walk their dogs. This is just cold. I'm not gonna say it looks like a prison like I usually do.
We'll reach out to the applicant and get their responses and get that out to council prior to the next meeting.
And I am glad to see a reduction in units, don't get me wrong. And I'm, I really hope these are fee simple so that we can build a community of homeowners.
Ms. Wilson?
Would you go back to the site plan, please? Show me where the water, I mean, the power pole is, that great big power pole. Where is it in conjunction with the, how close is it to the development?
Well, the overhead power line and the easement is on the left side of that drawing, if you will. And it would actually, the left-sided entrance way would go underneath some of the overhead power line.
It's on the same side as the development, on the same side of Marietta Highway?
It goes on the left side of this proposed development.
Okay, and also, where are the, where's the entrance and the exits? Are there two onto Marietta Highway?
Yes, it shows the two ingress, egress points on to Marietta Highway.
Right, up there in the, in the top left, top left? Thanks. I would point out, this is not in Ward One.
Good point, Joe.
Further comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Patton. Moving on. Public hearing discussion for cases ZCA 2106-002 and CUP 2106-001 for JW Collection LLC requesting zoning condition amendment and conditional use permit approval to develop 55 townhome units, 12 condominium flats, and 18,000 square feet of commercial office space at 200 River Green Avenue. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a zoning condition amendment, conditional use permit approval involving the property basically that is in the corner of State Route 20 and River Green Avenue. They are proposing 55 townhomes, 12 condominium flat units, 18,000 square feet of commercial office space that would, if you will, front along River Green Avenue in out parcels along River Green Avenue. I will be available to answer questions of council members towards the end of the public hearing.
Thank you. At this point, we will open up the public hearing and those wishing to speak in support of the project, starting with the developer.
Sir, I'm John Whelan. I'm the developer of River Green. I've been the developer for River Green for about 22 years. So this parcel at the front that we'd like the modification on was initially intended to be a strip commercial and with a small grocery store. And I think it's really a good thing that we never found a tenant for that because we would have had a lot more traffic, especially traffic from outside the neighborhood if we developed it that way. So the present plan for development, you can see on the screen and it shows commercial along River Green Avenue, as Ken has said, and then behind that, 55 townhomes. And then there is one condominium building, so. This would be an example of, these are actually built, commercial buildings in Milton that we did a number of years ago, but in the T and D style that we've created in the beginning in River Green. So we would, that would be lining down River Green Avenue. That would be a perspective drawing of it. And I think it'd be a nice way to enter the neighborhood. We'd be using the same curb cuts that we established when we initially laid out the neighborhood. And then this would be a townhome rendering. They'd be in buildings of three or four, so there'd be plenty of green space. And the front doors are all around the green space. And then the, the garages are all on the alleys. And I did want to show you a photograph of the retreat at River Green. And this is the first neighborhood that we've done in sort of the relaunch in River Green. And we, prices are in the high 300s. We had some wonderful early success and occupancy. All of these homes are occupied. And then the other was the condominium building. We think there's a need for some one-bedroom flats for single people. And that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. And then the final item is a concept for a drive, for a convenience store that you, it's a drive-in convenience store. You don't go in, you drive by and tell them you want coffee and milk or whatever. And whether or not that's gonna be financially viable or not, I don't know. But we want to include the thought that maybe we can be fortunate enough to land a tenant that would give us, in the neighborhood, shopping alternatives, you know, at the entrance. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay. No questions at this time of the hearing, so is there anyone else to speak in favor of? Okay. Are you, Mr. Palmer? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Richard Palmer. I live at 407 North Cascade Circle in Canton, Georgia, which is also in River Green, where I have been on the Board of Directors there for the HOA for the last five or six years and have been, served the role of president for about the last two or three years. So I just want to say we've been working with John Whelan since, I believe, late 2019, when he first showed interest in buying that parcel before he even bought it, came to us and let us know that. He's been, you know, in coordination with us throughout the process as he's developed these ideas. He's gone over with you tonight. And I am happy to say the Board of Directors unanimously is in favor of this. We also have heard the concerns of the residents of River Green about traffic as, you know, people do have concerns with traffic. With that, before, I'll say prior to COVID, we were actually looking at traffic concerns in River Green and considering getting a traffic cop for the front entrance for the period of time in the morning, particularly when the schools are, people dropping off kids at school as well as people trying to get out of the neighborhood. There's really no problem getting into the neighborhood that we've seen, but certainly in the morning it does back up. And we've worked with the DOT as far as the lights and some stuff. We think the solution is simply to get a traffic cop that comes in for about two hours in the morning and will resolve that problem. We feel as a board, we're gonna do that regardless of any additional development. That's something that needs to be done now. We obviously went through COVID, wanted to come out, see where we're at. School just started this week. We're kind of monitoring things and looking to bring that to vote and approve a budget to do that. To, for, we want to create a good experience for the residents of River Green. Part of that's being able to get out of the neighborhood. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more resident signed up to speak. Ms. Everhart, is that, Ms. Everhart, is that in favor or? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Inger Everhart and I live at 237 Oakview Drive, which is approximately 1,000 from the development and is also in River Green. For 10 years, I served as the executive assistant to the Cobb County District Recommissioner. And in that role, I learned about zoning and its tremendous importance. I'm intimately familiar with community meetings with neighbors in the area and how vital it is for developers to communicate with the community. As I understand it, the John Whelan team, as owners of the property, would like to merely add stipulations to the underlying mixed-use zoning that already exists. And as discussed earlier today, it is optimal to have a developer come before you guys, the council, and add stipulations and guide the development as opposed to going to court at the risk of unguided development, increased court costs, and a toss-up with the judge. So additionally, there were suggestions to leave the development as green space. As I've learned through being an EA for a district commissioner, the governing authority can only pay the appraisal price and sellers are within their rights to ask for more from the market. With that, I want to thank Ms. Horsmeyer and the John Whelan team for meeting with River Green and the impacted neighbors and allowing us to express our concerns. Thank you, Council Lady Schmidt, for your presence and correspondence with the community about the proposed development. And Ms. Horsmeyer, thank you for sending me the address of the similar property that's in Milton, Georgia, and Alpharetta. I drove by the development in Milton and it was a first, it was first-class with businesses that complemented the neighborhood and the surrounding townhomes and aesthetics and is maintained beautifully. I'm happy to support this development and look forward to its construction and completion in River Green. And I ask that you vote in favor of this development and approve the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one else signed up to speak, so there'll be no one speaking in opposition. So at this point, we will close the public hearing and open up to council for discussion.
I guess I have a couple of questions, Mr. Patton. We did receive an email, some feedback about concern about the feasibility of a condo building based on this small size and how fees would work. So before we move forward, I would just want some reassurance that that's doable as far as the laws for condo HOAs go. Because it's my understanding that this will be a sub-association within River Green's master association and the condo building has to be another sub-association. But with only 12 owners, there's concern that those fees would be astronomical. So if we could just...
By law, for condominiums, they do have to create a condominium association. Time will tell if it would be successful, if will, at 12 units and what kind of fees. I will reach out to the applicant, try to get additional information to provide to the council members in regards to this question.
Thank you. I would say that if we were going to approve this eventually and talk about conditions, one of them would be that I would want to discuss is that if there were a drive-up market, that there was conditions that made it safely walkable because everyone in River Green is going to want to walk, bike, or drive their golf cart there. They're not going to want to drive their car there. They might stop there in their car on the way in from work, but ideally, they want to send their 16-year-old up with his friends on their bikes to bring home a gallon of milk. So that would be a key. I would want to talk about conditions on the architecture, especially for some of the commercial. We know that the townhomes and the retreat are beautiful. But the condition, the architecture for the commercial, some of those got much better feedback than others, especially the, the one that looks really cottagey, that's yellow, but I'm told no yellow. But the top one, how it just looks really, you know, I don't know. What? Homie, yeah, like a cottage. So that received a lot of positive feedback from residents. The concerns, the biggest concerns, overwhelmingly, I didn't, I didn't receive a lot of feedback that said, please don't approve this. I did receive, almost every email I received talked about concerns about traffic. And I know that there are four existing curb cuts, but those curb cuts already cause problems. We, I've worked with city staff already on trying to make those crosswalks safer where those curb cuts are. We haven't been successful yet. We haven't been successful yet. River Green mows down those crosswalk signs literally once a week. We stopped putting them back out. So when you are coming off Highway 20, the speed limit in front of River Green is 55 miles an hour. So if you have a green light and you're in the turn lane to turn right into River Green off Highway 20, and, um, I lost my train of thought for a second. You're going really fast. The, the turn lane is really long. And so you're not, you might not be going 20 miles an hour. You might be going faster than that. And the first crosswalk and the first curb cut, if those people are trying to turn left out of that across two lanes of traffic where you're turning right into River Green and fighting the line at the light, it's going to be a problem. And it doesn't take a traffic study to reveal that. So those are the biggest issues of how people are going to get in and out. We've talked before about the, the solution to traffic in River Green is a light on the second entrance where the elementary school is on Highway 20. And GDOT will not agree to it, I understand. But that's what solves the problem. So since we can't get that and the roundabouts on Highway 20 for the state plan are not supposed to be done until 2027 or beyond, I feel like the developer and staff, I think we need to talk about some kind of condition that makes it safer. If, if people are turning left out of all four of those curb cuts in the mornings, that, it just doesn't make any sense. So I don't know exactly what the traffic flow looks like, but it would definitely be something that I would need to feel confident in a plan on before I approved this, before I voted to approve this. So I don't know. I know Ken, I had mentioned to you guys before that this was going to be a concern. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at anything yet.
Staff has talked about it. We have come up with some thoughts and ideas on a couple of things. We would, and we have not made a formal staff recommendation yet. We wanted to hear all of the input at the public hearing tonight. We'll reach out to the applicant, but there are some things that could be done. One of the things we think that probably would help out, the entrance closest to Highway 20, if that were to be a ride-in, ride-out only and the median extended so that, uh, you get a longer left turn lane on the Highway 20, that will help out with some of the congestion at the traffic signal. There are still ways for folks that are making the right turn into River Green to be able to get into this proposed project. Bethany and I will reach out to the applicant, have discussions, and we will include some things with the, the staff recommendation as it relates to this project, traffic, and traffic conditions. But just so you're aware, that's one of the things that we thought of that probably would help alleviate the traffic at the intersection.
The left turn lane out of River Green at the main entrance is def, the length of it is definitely a problem. And that's what causes the backup all the way past the Pinnacle Place Monument every single morning during a certain period of time. And I've been keeping track this week because I knew we were having this public hearing. But it has taken me 12 minutes or longer to get out of River Green to take my kids to school in the morning. And it is a problem with those two medians and the left turn lane. And now talking about those curb cuts coming in is just why it has to be solved to me before anything gets built. And then I, um, this is sort of unrelated because this is a thing that the HOA wants to do, but is it, I didn't think that we were allowed, I didn't think they would give Cherokee County sheriffs or Canton police on Highway 20 to direct traffic. Do we, is that a thing we know?
I don't think-
I know, but I thought even if, I thought, because we talked about this a long time ago for the school, maybe I'm misremembering. I just wondered if anybody knew off the top of their heads.
I'm not sure. I have to check into it. I'm not sure that, about, you know, utilizing, uh, police or anything relative to within the GDOT right-of-way, but there could be some action on River Green Avenue that could be considered. But anything to do with, uh, Highway 20 would have to be approved through GDOT.
If the city and the developer could work on a feasible traffic plan, I think that would be more favorable than using HOA dues for traffic direction. So I appreciate you looking into all of those concerns.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Cardland?
So I go with Ms. Schmidt said, I think, question here is, there's a big question about traffic. It sounds like a lot of people are putting their minds to that. My concern comes to the developer in this. Whatever conditions are placed in, I would encourage council to be very specific and have a great deal of, staff to have a great deal of oversight. The boondoggle that we had of this council CUP being ignored and abused by this developer for the retreat project and the bullying and poor neighboring that those county residents had to suffer is something that I don't want us to repeat. I'd like to see that whatever we decide to focus on, we make sure we have measurable goals and measurable compliance.
Any further questions, comments?
Can I ask what the CUP? Sorry, can I ask what the CUP, one, I'm not, I know the, the fence was the concern with the neighbor. What was the CUP?
Clearcutting hardwood trees and then building the fence coming in. Also the, even possibly stronger concern, the bullying of neighbors that were in that area as well. So for sure, what we like to talk about offline, but certainly concerns from, just if we're looking directly at the CUP, it's the clearcutting that wasn't supposed to be there and then fence building that was inappropriate initially. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Okay. Moving on to our last public hearing. Public hearing and discussion for cases Z2106-003, CUP 2106-005, and MP 2106-004 for WP Group acquisitions requesting to rezone 17.85 acres to PDMU Plan Development Mixed Use for the purpose of developing 260 multifamily apartment units and 50 townhome units.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This public hearing is a combined public hearing in regards to rezoning of the subject property, master plan approval, and conditional use permit approval. It is 17.85 acres up on Hospital Road. This is, a major portion of this is the old Northside Hospital site itself. It is proposing 260 apartment units and 50 townhome units. And I will be available to answer questions towards the end of the public hearing process.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. So at this point, we will open up the public hearing and ask developer to speak and those in support.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers, 1776 East 23rd and Atlantic, here on behalf of the applicant. We are pleased to be here before you tonight for this public hearing. You may recall, going back to 2019, some of you may recall, this is the hospital, former hospital site. And we had an application that was submitted back in March of 2019. We withdrew in August of 2019 and really implemented a lot of feedback. The city has obviously been going through, we've got the new housing study and just have a lot more data for growth in the city that we've been able to go back. Just wanted to kind of set the stage for where we were and where we've come to. The original plan was garden-style apartments and we have changed that drastically, as I think that you'll see. But just to set the stage again, these are the parcels that are the former hospital site owned by Northside. As you can see here, the zoning is SU and ORT. The SU is for special use. And so I think one of the important things when you're considering a rezoning, the special use, because the hospital is obviously no longer there, the property needs to be rezoned. It is no longer a special use area and actually was identified as a prime site for development in the city for residential, very similar to what we are proposing here. I've got the development plan before you to show. I want to just walk through the overall development scheme and I'll point out some of the changes that were made. Again, it's a little under 18 acres. One of the big changes in, you know, we'll, we'll talk about this transportation and, and traffic is we are proposing realigning the internal street that currently runs and cuts through the property. Right now, it's just a jagged road. We are proposing to realign Mary Lane. So that would help with the traffic flow through the property and in the area in general. If you see where the new Mary Lane would be, there are townhomes to the north of that. So there would be gated entrances on the north, but you will be able to flow through the property along Mary Lane. To the south of Mary Lane would be the multifamily homes and again, access there as well. And then you'll see on the left-hand side of the screen, the green space. That's an acre and a half that's designated as green space. We haven't, you know, programmed it specifically or anything, but the intention is to have community green space there as an amenity to the community. Wanted to point out, um, one of the things with this development, we will have 50-foot buffers. There is not much landscaping right now to separate. There is a home to the south of the property. There's really not much separation there. And so one of the significant, I think, additions that you would see with this would be the additional landscaping and buffering between our development and the residential neighbors to the south. This kind of gives you a clearer picture of the existing conditions. Again, realigning Hospital Drive to the cut-through with Mary Lane to improve the traffic flow as well as sort of on that lower left-hand side, adding a lot of landscaping where there's that retention pond. We want this to be beautiful, not only for the residents who live there, but also for the surrounding community at large. These are just some of the elevations of the townhomes that are proposed. This is elevations of the multifamily homes that are proposed. Again, another slide with the elevations to show you the architecture, a modern style. And again, just revisiting the site plan. Want to talk about, you, you all as a council and as a city have focused on quality growth. We know that the city is growing and quite frankly, that's not a bad thing. You are well-positioned in a beautiful place to live and people want to call Canton home. You are in a growth area and I think you have a roadmap to really guide the growth, which is fantastic because it's intentional on the city's behalf. I went through, I won't necessarily go through, but I could. And I took the roadmap and I went through the different categories and how this really does fit within that. The other thing is the city's housing needs and assessment and market study. This property was specifically identified as a development site in the city's study. And in there, the city's study recognized the opportunity to add more residential units in the downtown area. And they suggested 60 townhomes, 440 apartment homes would be an appropriate density for this parcel. What you will see that we have designed here is less than that. So we are looking at 50 townhomes and I'm not the best with math and I didn't do the math before, so I don't want to say half because I don't think that that's right. But, you know, we're, we are significantly under what the suggested apartment homes would be. I want to talk about timing of development because that's also critical. Sometimes, and, and I respect the fact and I know change is hard. Sometimes change is really not welcomed because there is the unknown. And we have heard consistently tonight, and I know you hear consistently at your meetings, and it's something we all experience consistently, is traffic. And one of the things that I think is important to note is this is not, if you approve this development, this does not mean immediate impact right now. We are really looking at probably 2024 by the time this community has people living here. And so that's important because the city's got a lot going on and a lot of improvements that are in the works that are going to help some of the existing road conditions that we know are troubling. And quite frankly, they're troubling right now. And this development is not going to exacerbate that because it's not coming online tomorrow. So we've got time and the city has plans that are in the works right now for the traffic improvements along 140. One of the things that I also wanted to note is just when you're thinking about your zoning decisions, this was the former hospital site. Obviously, a lot of traffic was flowing in and out of here. Hasn't been for a while since the hospital closed and has since been demolished. But any development here is going to generate traffic. And that's not a reason to turn away good, quality development. This fits the city's identified goals and needs. And we believe that we have gone back to the drawing board and are coming before you with a much different development plan that does align with both the city's roadmap as well as the housing study, although we're actually at less density than what the housing study would indicate. Again, as Mr. Patton indicated, we are here for a rezoning, a master plan, and a conditional use permit. We are happy to talk about conditions or answer questions that you have. And I would like to reserve the rest of my time for the rebuttal. I have some. All right.
Okay. Thank you. We have one citizen signed up. I believe it's to speak in opposition. Amy King, is that opposition?
I'm Amy King. My mother owns five partials that have joined the hospital's properties. 121, 131, 141. And then there's a lot on the back of 131 that's a separate partial. And then there's 201 Riverstone Parkway. I appreciate her saying that they're going to add additional landscaping, I guess, because I would not leave until I constantly reiterated it. But also, Mr. Johnson stated it wasn't going to be a Luxurious Garden, that they would do something, that the main focus would be the end of the retention pond that points toward Riverstone, not Riverstone, I'm sorry, Hospital Road. That's nice and that's well and good. As he said, that's the doorway to the project. But the other 95% is on my mother's property and what we have to look at. There's not an angle from the end of the driveway at 121, 141 all the way to our back door that you do not see the retention pond. And I realize that it, it wasn't them. But when the hospital was allowed to extend their parking lot, they were allowed to put this massive retention pond. The length of it runs the entire length of 141. The width of the retention pond is the width of our house. We do not have a narrow house. It's a pretty wide house. Then they're going to expand it. And from what I could tell from the meeting and the diagram, I would guess that's a 40 to 50% increase in width. They stated they would have to go deeper. There's a possibility they'll have to in, um, install a water filtration system. For me, just a common person, I'm thinking you can only go so deep until you're below the lines that's going to take it out to the stormwater. So to, to obtain that depth, are they going to have to build a wall? He mentioned a wall. That's when I thought, are they bringing dirt? Are we talking a poured wall? Are we talking a stacked wall? What type of wall? What are we going to be looking at? Because currently, I walked it before the meeting today. You're right, depending on the curve of the end of the retention pond that's right beside our driveway at 141, it's between nine and 12 feet, nine and 12 feet. At the time, the hospital wasn't required. The city did not require them to do any landscaping. All the landscaping, all the crepe myrtles, all the shrubbery, we were given permission by Northside. We were contacted by the late Donald Blanton at the time. He was the head engineer of Northside Hospital, that we could install the landscaping that we had to. My mother should not have had to take on that expense or that project. And I don't anticipate her to take on any more expenses for this. We prefer that the retention pond not be expanded because now it's going to go past what we call a garage. If you look at it, y'all will call it a barn. But it is my grandparents' barn that we use as a garage. So, but if you have to, and if you- So, but if you have to, and if you do approve these apartments or any development, what we would like is for there to be an eye-pilling fence. What the city allowed the hospital to install is a six-foot chain link fence that looks like a prison yard when you're in any angle of our property. I would like to see more of an eye-pilling fence. I would like to see, not just at the end of Hospital Road, but encircle in the entire retention or detention pond, it is, of some type of landscaping. Not a shrub here or there, not a tree here or there, but something that's really eye-pilling because as I said, there's not a window in our house. There's not a view from my mother's renter house. You know, I realize they say our property value in the meeting at the library, they say your property value is going to go up. We're going to be selling townhouses. My mother's property value will go up probably as far as assessment for taxes for the city and county. But I can assure you, as far as someone wanting to acquire that property, no, the value is ruined. And for it to be even larger, and then on top of that, building number four, it was explained to us that there wasn't a lot they could do as far as privacy between us and apartment four. We were told it's going to be a four-story apartment building. It's going to be looking down on us. What little privacy we have, which is not much with the apartment, I mean, the parking lot, is, is going to be gone. I personally think they can do more. They say this is over a $60 million project. I would think any type of landscaping, be it mature trees between us and the apartment building or around the retention pond or eye-pilling type privacy fence, it's going to be very minimum to their budget for this project. Like I said, we prefer that it wouldn't be expanded. We prefer that there would not be apartments. I realize that's where they're generating their cash. I know what apartments bring in monthly just for the locals here that have small developments. So I only can imagine what they're going to get in every month off of this. So I realize that's their revenue. That's what's going to generate, you know, their profit. But, you know, as my mother said, she wants everyone to win. We're not anti-growth. As I said at the library, you don't live and love North Canton if you don't like convenience. And you're a hypocrite if you're going to say, no growth, but I want to live right in North Canton. So as she said, she wants everyone to win. She wants the city to have a street that they're proud of. No one wants to see that street developed and cleaned up more than my mother. She's 80 years old. She remembers the prime of that street. And I'm talking prior to RT Jones being constructed, prime. So she wants it cleaned up. We know that your hands are tied on a lot of things. One of the blightest properties on there is Spot Zone County. So I realize y'all have no control over that. So, but, you know, we want the city to have a street that's proud of. We want Northside to have that thorn out of their side. They, I can tell you what they've gone through and what we've gone through with that property being vacant. And we want the developers to have the project. But we don't want it at the expense of my mother's property. We don't want her to be the one that loses out on this. And that's what I see is her losing out on that. The other thing is the traffic. I've talked about so much traffic here. Y'all are probably sick of hearing it. I know the city has acquired the property that's directly across Mary Lane, over across 140. So I'm hoping that's a sign that, you know, Show Creek's going to be rerouted to line up with Mary Lane. But I don't know what Seno's plans, but Mary Lane's going to have to, there's going to have to be some property required there too. Right now, you cannot get up and down Mary Lane. The residents park on both sides of the road. The residents have allowed the, the trees to literally cover it. When you go into Mary Lane from Hospital Road, it's like driving in a cave. I personally will not drive my car there because it gets scratched. You can't get two cars, even if no one's parked on the side of the road, you cannot get two cars in there. If one's pulling in, you've got to let the other one out. When you're coming out of Mary Lane, it's very blinding to make a left. I know the Cutts property sold, you know, I'm not sure who bought it. I'm kind of hoping somebody bought it to help, you know, with Mary Lane. They did say in the traffic study that everybody's going to go out the backside down Medical Lane, what we, or the locals call the backside of the hospital. And we agreed. My husband and I said, yes, that's what your new residents will do. They will go down there until they find out they can't. When you get down there, it's very blinding. Several years ago, the city, I guess the road was wide enough so they just stuck an extra lane down there. So when you're trying to make a right and another person's making a left, you're just, you're just blinding each other. And the next thing you know, you both have inched out in the middle of Riverstone. And they're right. When I go home just to pick up my son from my mother's, and she's at North Side will Drive, I have to come out of Show Creek, make a right. I cannot make a left onto Hospital Road. I go to the light to make a left. It takes one person trying to turn in on the side. And I'm sure there's nothing y'all can do about the curb entrance on that shopping strip that's got little seizures in an insurance place and a check cashing place. They literally will back traffic up all the way down Riverstone to Daisy so they can make a left to go in there. And then you've got the people there. I mean, it is an absolute disaster. Like I said, my main focus is the retention pond. It's a personal thing. And it's not just for us. There's older neighbors across the street that's lived there for years. They don't want to look at a larger retention pond. The neighbors have been there over 60 years, you know, when the hospital did that. They've got the big view with the water coming out of the, the, I don't know what you call it, but the big cement thing, you know. They would like something more eye-pilling. So just like the developers want it to be eye-pilling for their new residents, don't forget about the property owners who have been there 60, 80 years and have been, the property's been in their families that long. And I guess that's all I've got to say. But like I said, I prefer not apartments, but it's out of our hands. And it seems like that's the thing. Every day, I read in the Tribune or the Ledger, it's more apartments, more apartments, more apartments. And I work in Waleska and I see where, just the impact of the traffic that the apartments that they built at Laurel Canyon, all those people are headed to Canton. You know, just like the subdivisions in Waleska are headed to Canton. So, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. A bottle of wine? I believe you have two minutes, I think, Mr. Bepristin.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity for rebuttal. You know, I, I think we are aligned. We are aligned in wanting this not only to be a street that the city is proud of and the existing residents are proud of, but also that will attract new residents to the area and that everybody can be proud of. And one of the things that is vital to a new development and that is really, you know, a key part, is the landscaping. So we are completely aligned. We are going to be working with the city to comply, I believe, with the, the green infrastructure on, on the retention. So I, I think that, you know, we have not fully engineered. It would be premature to engineer it at this stage before our approvals, but are certainly happy to work with the surrounding neighbors to make sure that the landscape plan is something that, that does provide the look and feel not just for the new residents in the development, but for the community at large. Because that's going to benefit everyone and we are certainly aligned in that goal. Happy to answer any questions and we'll certainly be happy to work with staff and with council on some good conditions to ensure that the vision that we have that does provide that enhanced landscaping, which does not currently exist today except what the property owner had to plant. Generous of Northside to, to let her plant, but that was certainly done at her expense and that would not be the case here. This would be landscaping that we would do on our property on our dime. So thank you all and appreciate the consideration and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. This will close the public hearing and open up to council for questions and comments. We have questions for Mr. Patton or comments? Ms. Wilson?
I wasn't able to hear everything you said about Mary Lane. But I drove down there this week and, and Amy's right. It's, it's very, very small. Two cars can't pass. So what is the developer planning to upgrade Mary Lane?
Well, the developer is interior their development. They, they plan to line up their interior road, if you will, between the apartments and the townhomes to coincide with the existing Mary Lane. As far as improvements on the existing Mary Lane, nothing has been discussed in regards to improvements of Mary Lane. You are correct. It is a very narrow street. Think it's maybe 40-foot right-of-way by prescription possibly. The paving is 16 feet at best. Could even be less in places. That's something that is going to have to be looked at with improvements along 140 and things that happen with that project and things for city council to consider.
In the, in the, the part of Mary Lane that is a part of the development, are they planning to put sidewalks?
They will, our development regulations require sidewalks along streets. They will have to install sidewalks along Hospital Road and Medical Lane on the other side to be in compliance with our UDC guidelines.
Right. What about the detention pond? Is there any, has, has there been any discussion about, about making the detention pond smaller or some kind of, of screen there, whether it's landscaping or a fence?
Well, the city, and this is a conceptual drawing.
Right.
The city has adopted the green infrastructure program, which with those requirements will make some changes on how detention ponds are built and that sort of thing. That the size of it could change. There are other options to be looked at in regards to possibly having some detention, if you will, underground with some of the parking areas. City council could certainly add a condition of a landscape strip of a certain width adjacent to those residential properties on the south side. Even specify size of materials to go in that landscaping strip to provide that screening for those existing property owners.
Okay. I think we all agree that the existing site, as it exists now, is pretty much an eyesore. So we're looking forward to getting something there that will be, that will enhance the city. And I think the residents around there would agree, Amy and some of the other folks that spoke tonight would agree that we do want something there that would make us proud. So with some of these conditions that we've talked about tonight, I think we could, you know, I, I think we could make it a lot better than it is now.
And there will be a staff recommendation before city council prior to the next meeting. And we will have a list of suggested potential conditions for city council consideration.
Great.
Ms. McGee?
If Mr. Toland was at, I mean, that's fine.
I know it's semi-ben addressed, but I would love for us to place a condition on the applicant specifically for the residents that are going to be affected from a visual perspective, to put mature trees to help obscure some of the, some of the, you know, the, the view of the apartment complex. I, I know that that's, again, something that we've batted around a little bit tonight, but I would like to see that as a specific requirement.
And that, that's part of what I had previously mentioned, Count Toland, is specifying tree sizes and things of that nature within the landscape area and the landscape strip as a condition of approval. It could be a mix and match, if you will, of evergreens, hardwoods, overstory, understory trees, things of that nature that ultimately provides that solid visual screen for those residential properties.
Perfect. Just want to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
Ms. McGee?
Mr. Patton, I was wondering if you would discuss with the applicant the possibility of making it all one development? Because they had said before that the townhomes would be totally separate, might or might not have use of the amenities. If this were all one development and everyone had equal use to the amenities, I think that would be conducive to a family environment and community. Also, I, I'm curious if the applicant would be willing to make building one, two, or three of the apartments into fee simple condos also? And reduce the number of renters, but encourage homeownership and community building that way.
Staff will reach out to the applicant and provide their response to these two matters.
Thank you.
Mr. Gardlin?
From this development, you really have four ways out. You've got two to 140, either end of Hospital Road, you've got Mary Lane, you've got Medical Drive. DOT is already looking at Mary Lane and trying to figure that problem out. What are our limitations or our options as far as the Riverstone raised donut side? Are we, is that a road that we can put a light, that the city council could put a light to on its own? Or is it something that we have to go back?
Riverstone?
Yes, sir.
It's questionable. I can tell you that in 2008, there was a project that was in the regional transportation plan that was approved along Riverstone Parkway in which GDOT was willing to install a traffic signal where Medical Lane comes out into Riverstone, put another ingress egress into the shopping center. But part of GDOT approval for that project was doing away with what I call the suicide lane and putting concrete barrier. Some of the business owners at that time were vehemently opposed to that and city council turned down that project and had it removed out of the regional transportation plan. So I'm not sure if GDOT still has control of Riverstone through there or not. Staff will follow up. But I can tell you from 2008, there was a proposal for a signal there, but there were other things that had to occur for the signal to be placed at that T intersection.
Very good. I think that would solve some of our traffic issue here. It would also solve some of our, our road crossing and safety issues we have across Riverstone at that spot as well. Might be a solution across the board if we just look into it. I know, I know we can't necessarily tie it to this, but as we're talking about solutions. Interested in looking at that. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Well, just so you're aware, there was a previous signal approved, but it had some conditions with it and city council declined.
It's a whole new day, Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir.
I was going to bring that up, same issue up, because we have, we all know that we have issues there, traffic issues, safety issues, that we've had accidents there.
Last week.
And, yeah, so, I mean, it happens, you know, on a weekly basis. So that could address, you know, a lot of those issues. I would argue that, that it does, could relate to this project because I think all those, the citizens, if the project is approved, living in these nice units, you know, getting into downtown, they have to cross Riverstone. And if there was a nice crossing there, that would, you know, help with that. And so I think one of the questions would be, you know, if there is some cost there, would the applicant be willing to contribute to that? To, to get those residents across Riverstone into downtown, into the middle of Etowah, you know, to improve their walkability in pedestrian traffic? So I think it could solve a lot of issues, but also I think it could be very beneficial to the, to the, to the neighborhood there as well, so.
To follow up on that, would that be similar to, it wouldn't be, maybe it wouldn't be similar to the Teasley problem of that light, which is purely a city issue that needs to be resolved?
If I'm not mistaken, I'll have to verify, but I think GDOT has certain control, a certain distance back from the T intersection of Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive. And I believe previously, there were some issues with GDOT with signalization there at Teasley Middle School.
Gotcha. Would, because it is a GDOT project, does that change? I shouldn't ask this question. Would that change a cost from a cost perspective? Whether it's a city intersection or it's a GDOT intersection?
Well, it's a city intersection, but because Reinhardt College Parkway is a state road, GDOT has control, certain distances from their rights way and that sort of thing. For instance, I know specifically that they have control over signage for 660 lineal feet from interchanges on I-575, which affects quite a few properties and that sort of thing. But I want to recall that with the initial discussions about But I want to recall that with the initial discussions about signalization there at Teasley, there was something to do with GDOT approval.
Makes sense.
But we'll follow up and get that information back to the council members.
Sure. Just an idea of a cost of that Medical Lane light, if we have some rough estimate that might help us, similar to what we're talking about with the Great Sky property, the developer's going to help with traffic and see if we have a contribution towards that. Thank you, Mr. Patton. And also, I'm sorry, I can also say, anything we can do landscape-wise, an eye peeling wall, whatever it's going to be, I think certainly will support that to alleviate concerns raised by Ms. King.
There's also the same just access across Riverstone to Heritage Park, and our trail system would be highly beneficial to those residents living there, so.
Let's not underestimate the importance of making it safer for everyone to get to Raised Donuts as well.
Definitely. Other comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
That concludes our public hearings. I would suggest that we take a five-minute break before we begin our actual meeting for tonight, so. Okay, now that we've had our bio breaks, we'll proceed with our work session, so. And we'll start with considerations approved, the minutes in your council package. You have the draft minutes for our council meeting on July 15th, and a special called council meeting draft minutes from July 21st. Do we have any revisions, comments, or any motions?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, and?
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. All members voted for the motion. Moving into informational items, item A, upcoming qualifying dates, times, and fee for November 2nd, 2021 municipal election. Mr. Peppers? There's no name on here, so whoever wants it, so.
We just wanted to make sure it was properly announced, but we do have qualifying that'll start on Monday, August the 16th, at 8:30 a.m. here at City Hall. It'll go to 5:00 p.m. on Monday. On Tuesday, August 17th, it'll go from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then on Wednesday, August 18th, it'll go from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The qualifying fee for council member positions is $360, and you can get the qualifying packet on the city's website or reach out to the city clerk.
Great. Thank you. You also have in your packet the review of the June financials. Ms. Forster is here, if anyone has any questions or comments on those. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item C, information only for upcoming public hearing cases. AX 2107-001 and Z2107-002, Grid Properties is seeking to annex 177.43 acres and zone the property PDMU Plan Development Mixed Use.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Patton will let you take those, too, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Council, Mayor and council members. This is information only. Grid Properties is requesting annexation and zoning, plan development mixed use on the 177 acres. We will be presenting a staff technical report at August 19th meeting. The public hearing for this will be held on September the 2nd, and the city council may make the decision on September 16th. This 177 acres and the project is the proposed Polecap Mountain Winery Resort Project. We are awaiting a final determination from Atlanta Regional Commission staff as to whether this project will have to go through the full development of regional importance review process. If that determination is that this has to go through the DRI process, city council can move forward with the public hearing in September, but city council cannot make a final decision until after receiving the end report from ARC, DCA, and Greta in regards to the DRI process. They will submit a report if it goes that far. Hopefully, staff will hear something out of the ARC staff fairly quickly. We sent additional information to them today and yesterday, so hopefully we'll get a, an answer and know exactly which way to go with this project.
And item D, would you want to review that one, Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. The other information only item is annexation 2107-003 and zoning 2107-004. The Cherokee Board of Education is requesting annexation of 2.02 acres of land. Excuse me. City of Canton is working with Board of Education in regards to this application. This application and the 2.02 acres is an island of unincorporated Cherokee County, fully contained within the Riverstone property that the Board of Education purchased from the Riverstone developer and property owner. This would, annexation zone would clear up that island, and it would make it such that the Board of Education would only deal with the City of Canton as it moved forward with development of the project instead of having to deal with two jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
We have informational item E, a request from Mr. Thomas Weaver to share some comments with council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I rise today and respectfully request that council please consider the recent charter amendments that were finalized by yourselves and how they relate with specificity under section 1.14, paragraph 37 of the city charter pertaining to the inclusion of the clarification language pertaining to the discharge of firearms in relation to state law, and cross-reference that to existing city code section 34-3 as referenced in the letter. That is part of your agenda attachment materials, and I would respectfully request that if the mayor would choose to allow it, that the mayor please consider, along with council's direction of appointing the public safety committee and convening them to consider that matter further. My request is based on my belief that a portion of the city's ordinance can better be clarified to match what council has now clarified in the city charter for consistent added state law compliance in that space. Thank you. I know that's not on the agenda now, but it's my hope that can be looked into soon.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any other announcements? We had no one sign up for the public input this evening, so we'll move into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action to purchase property located at 240 McClure Street for $19,100 and approve the city manager to execute settlement statements for closing. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening. We've mentioned it a couple of times before, hence the reason it's on old business, about the purchase of these two pieces of property. If you recall, a little over a month ago, we, council approved the purchase of the adjacent property, which is, which lies between Harmon Park and the property that was for discussion tonight. The owner of the property has come forth and is prepared to execute and transact that purchase if, if council were to approve that. So we are asking that council consider taking action on that tonight if you're amenable to that purchase. It is $19,000, $19,100, and that will complete our purchase of, the city will own all three parcels there for future potential use.
Great. Have discussed this before. Any comments, questions, or motions?
Motion to approve purchase?
Second.
Motion is second. Need for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Members voted for the motion. Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Ingram for cleaning the microphone after each speaker. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Clean it up yourself. Consistency is key.
Well done, Mr. Ingram.
Where, where this podium out?
Moving into new business, item A, discussion and possible action of intergovernmental agreement and with the Downtown Development Authority for the redevelopment of property at 130 East Main Street. Mr. Peppers?
This agreement is one that we have had before. Basically, it allows the Downtown Development Authority to market that building for sale for redevelopment and for the city to agree to, in the future, transact the sale of that through the Downtown Development Authority. If council moves forward with this tonight, Downtown Development Authority has a meeting that they are planning on the 11th, which would allow them to also approve the agreement and then work through a development process with a potential buyer.
And we've been discussing this, and this one more step forward to, to getting a great new use for the Johns Building, so. Discussion.
Motion to approve the IGA with the Downtown Development Authority for the redevelopment of 130 East Main Street and to authorize the mayor to sign the IGA.
A motion and a second. Need for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers?
The only thing I was gonna mention is that if you go to Heritage Park, you'll see that we are almost completed with a plyometric gem at that facility. The equipment's in place. We still have a little bit of landscape around it to complete, but that's the outdoor gem right there at the base of the stairs at YMCA at Heritage Park, so it's in, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can, we can get a ribbon cutting on it, so. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. It's exciting. Yeah, I had no council introduced items early on, but any clarification? I have nothing to report this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss real estate?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate.
Second.
A motion and a second. We'll, we won't be coming back out, or we'll... Okay. Possibility we may be coming back out, but we're not sure yet. But do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. All members voted to adjourn to executive session.
Bye, Bethany.
Bye, Bethany.
Bye.
So long.
It'll be the same.